Record?
Okay. Good morning. It is December 22nd, Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. Board of Ada County Commissioners is here for our open business meeting. We've got all three commissioners with us. Commissioner Kenyon is on the phone. Commissioner LaCiando is on WebEx. We've got in the room with us Bob Perkins, Axe Yor, Mark Perfect, I gotta get everybody standing down here, Luke's in the corner helping us with our technology. Also online, we've got Richard Beck, Dawn Burns with a host of her Juvenile Corrections staff, and who else is up? We've got Elizabeth Mon, Beth Mon, our treasure, Steve Rutherford, Elizabeth Duncan. And if I've missed any one of our elected officials or department heads, I apologize. We will make sure we get everybody listed on the record that is here. And with that, we will get kicked off. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to this agenda?
No, there are not.
All right. Well, we're gonna start off with special recognition for our Juvenile Services staff. And I believe Commissioner LaCiando has a little something to read in that regard.
I do, and what an honor it is to recognize you all this morning. So, the Idaho Juvenile Justice Association holds an annual statewide conference for juvenile justice professionals. This year, it was held virtually in October. And during the conference, the IJJA board provides a commitment to service award to a selected recipient in each district. And this year, the Ada County Juvenile Probation Division received the award for District Four. The nomination for the award read, "We all know 2020 has been a year of great uncertainty, and we had to modify everything we do in working with youth and families, yet they did it. The awesome juvenile probation team in Ada County stepped up and ensured youth and families were supported during these difficult times. Our administrative specialist team took on new roles and responsibilities, as at times they were the only ones in the building. As a team, we successfully submitted all court reports on time, attended all hearings virtually, and made contact virtually with over 1,000 youth and their families. When face-to-face visits resumed, the teamwork stepped up even as more contacts were made as a big team, not by probation officers, individual caseloads. The team also converted all trainings to a virtual format, allowing us to ensure all certification training took place in this uncertain year. So, in these unprecedented times, I ask you to consider this unprecedented nomination for Ada County Juvenile Probation Division, not one individual, as we would not have been successful without everyone showing up and their dedication, teamwork, and leadership." So, such a thrill to be able to recognize all of you, and it sounds like this was the first time that a team was nominated and won instead of an individual. And, you know, we're all kind of sick of hearing wrongness together, but it is so true. We have to keep acting like it. And wow, what a great job, you guys. You do such important work during normal times, but trying to keep the wheels on this year has been especially important. So, I'm sure Director Burns may have a few words to say.
Absolutely. Dawn?
Thank you, Commissioner LaCiando, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely. We're so proud of our probation team. And just a word about IJJA, it is the premier organization for detention and probation in Idaho. And so, to be honored by them, it is definitely just outstanding for our team. I know we don't have a picture of the plaque in front of us, but the tagline on the plaque is dedication to service, leadership, and teamwork. And I just want to say, this team just absolutely exemplifies that, and so very, very deserving of the award. I can't say enough about my team. I know I could go on, and you have a list with us today. I just want to also let you know, we have Jeff Schatz here, Lea Hanson here, Jessica Barrowhead, and Chris Palmer. And so, our management team, and Chris is the Assistant Division Manager, we're all here to just say thank you to our team, and thank you to the board for recognizing us today.
Well, I just think you guys have done an outstanding job. Director Burns, as you know, I have a little heart for juvenile justice. I was a corrections officer in Arizona for juvenile for a little while. And it's difficult enough to do all that you're doing in regular times, and to get this award for excellence, given all the technological hurdles you had to use and overcome all the things with the COVID situation, it's just outstanding. And I know Commissioner Kenyon, I'm sure, would also like to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. I just wish we were all there in person to celebrate this together. So exciting. And thank you all, your team, for your hard work. This is the type of work that truly the backbone of making a healthy community, working with our adolescents and our youth. So, it's just really critical. And the work that you've all done here to deserve this is just outstanding. So, thank you. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Director Burns for all of her dedication and hard work. You probably all received the internal communications of her retirement, and so this, I just thought this would be a good time for all of us to say thank you. And you've just done an outstanding job serving your community. So, thank you, Dawn, and thank you to your team.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Going out on a high note, for sure.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, thank you all for joining us this morning. And any of you that don't need to remain on, are welcome to jump off the WebEx if you'd like. And we're gonna go ahead and open our public hearings for our resolutions. And we'll take up first Resolution 2587, Resolution Updating Ada County Public Records Request Policy. And I know this one, it's gonna, if anyone listening in or reading it may be concerned, this doesn't change anything statutorily that we're required to release, or that we can or cannot redact. It's simply more routing administrative aspects of it, and...
Don't forget your volunteer board.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You know what? I'm gonna pause the public record, because I scrolled down too far on my agenda, and was kindly reminded that we have two appointments for Planning and Zoning Commission that we need to handle first. So, we will go back to this. And we've got two appointments, Jeremy Rousch and Doug Exton, that we interviewed. And we had a panel of Richard Beck, Jason Bowle, and myself. We interviewed these gentlemen. We had a dead heat on almost who we were gonna appoint to the current open seat, and then realized we had one coming open very soon. So, decided, hey, we'll make it easy on ourselves, and we'll just take number one and two as it is. So, Richard or Jason, do you guys have anything you want to offer on either of these?
I can just say that we are really excited when we have citizens volunteer to serve in the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think both of these candidates are gonna bring unique perspectives, which, and we're really excited to work with them.
Excellent. Yeah, I think we all came to a very strong consensus that we had two really strong candidates here. So, I'm looking forward to this appointment. They're a little on the younger side, which means hopefully they may be around for a while and available to continue to help us. So, unless either of my Commissioners has anything else, with that, I will take up a motion for these appointments.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, and just wanna echo those thanks. Serving on P&amp;Z is a crucially important role, somewhat thankless at times. So, thank you so much for stepping up. I move to approve the two volunteer board appointments as listed on the agenda with the terms as specified.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Chair states aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. Now, we will move on to our resolutions, and I will reopen the public hearing for Resolution 2587. Again, this is the policy for public records, handling public records requests. Does not change anything legally that we are statutorily required to provide, what we can or cannot redact. It's more internal routing, how this process and procedures are gonna be handled internally, and just giving notification to any department heads or individuals who have a public records request come in in their area. So, if there is, is there anyone here to testify on 2587? I don't see anyone online. I don't believe we have anyone online. So, with that, I will close the...
Commissioner Malloy?
Yes, Commissioner Kenyon.
Yes. Is Steve Rutherford on? He's worked really hard with legal on this, and I think that if he's there, it would behoove us to have him say a few words. This board has worked really hard on timeliness, transparency, making sure that we get any information out to the public as requested, and the most effective and efficient way possible. And I know that he's been working on this for quite a few months, so if he has anything to add, I think this would be a good time.
Absolutely. Steve Rutherford, I know you're on. Would you like to give us a little insight?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can, very well.
Perfect. So, thank you, Mr. Kenyon. This is kind of a labor of love for me. I'm a public records guy at heart, and we've gotten an internal process set up so that we make sure we've got kind of triple redundancy built in, so that public records requests come in and are routed and answered in a timely fashion, and that should any public records requests come into this office that belong to another elected official or department head, that we can route it appropriately and kind of come alongside them and assist them. This is part of a bigger measure. We've gotten a, again, redundancy is the key. We've gotten a list put together of all the departments and offices at the county, and each of them has at least two, and in some cases, three, public records custodians identified. Heather McCarthy in the prosecutor's office and I will start training soon for all those custodians, mostly just to get them to know who represents other departments in the public records realm, so that they can support each other when requests come in that touch multiple departments or offices. So, that training should start early next year. But as Commissioner Malloy said, this really doesn't dictate what is given. It just dictates how quickly things are routed, who's responsible, who communicates the, you know, that the request came in. And I would like to thank the legal beagles, particularly Heather, to get this finally dialed in and before you for approval. So, thank you.
All right. Yes, thank you. And this is critical, too, because just in the last week, I think I've had 10 different advice letters on different PRRs that have come in. So, it's something we get a lot of, and so it's good to be able to process those quickly. So, with that, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2587 and take up a motion.
Happy to. Before I do, I'd just like to note for the record that if this is your labor of love, Steve, we might need to find you a new hobby. So, don't make me put that on the record. Okay. With that, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2587 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that happily.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. Now, I will open the public hearing for Resolution 2592. Resolution Adjusting Ada County's Budget to Reflect the Receipt of Unscheduled Revenue to Ada County Prosecuting Attorney's Budget. And this is grant funds that we are receiving, and this happens periodically throughout the year. I believe this is the one, sadly, I think we're getting this money because we're considered a high drug trafficking area. But well-needed funds, and will be put to good use. And is there anyone? I don't think we have anyone to testify on this resolution. Do we have any discussion from either of my fellow Commissioners? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2592 and take up a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2592 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2593. Resolution Formalizing Citizens Advisory Committee for Elected Officials Compensation. And this is to create a team similar, and I'm gonna let Steve tee this off, too, but similar to what they have at the state level and the legislature. And Steve, you wanna fill us in a little bit, too? You've been very involved in this one as well.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. This is not a labor of love, but important nonetheless. This is, you know, elected official compensation is really difficult, particularly difficult for the Commissioners, because you're, you know, you're voting and giving yourself a raise. And so, the beauty of this approach, that really was kind of the consensus of all of the elected officials, is we should have meaningful public involvement in setting elected officials' salaries, and it should be based on similar market analysis for counties and other governmental agencies, and even in some cases, private enterprise, that do similar work in other locations that are similar in size and complexity to Ada County. And so, this approach was put in place with the heavy involvement of HR and the prosecutor's office, guided by the elected officials and the group of elected officials. And so, we've built a process where we'll put a commission or a citizens committee of five folks together. HR and legal and myself will provide them all of the necessary information that they need, from what elected officials are required to do, what their statutory responsibilities are, what their budgets are, those sorts of things. And then, we'll couple that with a bunch of market analysis about what other public officials that are compensated doing the same or similar work. And hopefully, they can arrive at a good recommendation that will be booted up to the board for action that the board can take during the budget period. So, I'm really excited to get this thing kicked off and to get these committee members selected, appointed, and up to speed and educated, so that they can do the very important work of addressing elected official salaries.
Very good. Thank you. And with that, again, unless there is any discussion from my fellow Commissioners, I think this is just another transparency improvement. I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2593 and take up a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2593 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
I will second aye. I don't know if Commissioner Kenyon dropped out.
Oh, aye.
There we go. Okay. Ayes have it. All three. Okay. I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2594. Resolution Regarding Remote Zoning Hearings and Meetings. And I don't think we have anybody from the public, but Axe Yor is here. If there are any specific questions, this is Axe, as I understand it, providing for the developers that would normally have face-to-face meetings and hearings with the public to allow them to do their meetings remotely, similarly to how we run some of our public hearings here, given the COVID situation.
That is correct. Also, it's a little broader, because it also brings in hearings just to make sure we cover all the bases, not just meetings that you have to have under planning and zoning regulations, but also any kind of hearings, just to bootstrap it up.
So, with this, will they, and Mark Perfect is here, too, they'll have the WebEx websites or phone numbers to call in for public comment and things like that on all their sign postings now, correct?
That is correct. However, the developers want to run it as a virtual meeting, whatever platform they want to use, Zoom...
Right.
Whatever. They just need to get that information out to the neighbors when they do their mailed radius notice that they're having a neighborhood meeting.
I think this is the way the world is gonna move in a lot of ways, not just because of COVID, but I think, you know, even if COVID went away, I think this is just something that's now with technology, the way it is, makes it easier for participation without physically having to be together. So, I think a good move. Any comments from either of my fellow Commissioners?
No, just thank you to Development Services for their good work.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Development Services and Axe. Appreciate it.
Exactly. And our legal team for jotting all the i's and crossing all the t's, making sure we're good. Well, with that, then I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2594 and take up a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2594 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. In our last public hearing, I will open the public hearing for Fire Protection Annexation into Eagle Fire Protection District. And this, as I understand it, it was requested by the family being annexed in, so I don't think we have a controversial issue, and I don't know that we have anyone here to testify on this. But this is very similar to the ones we've done in recent weeks. We had some in the Kuna and other areas. So, unless I have any questions or comments from either of my fellow Commissioners? None?
No. Mr. Chair, I think a number of these are coming as a result of some work we did to let homeowners know that they were not in the fire protection district and that no one was coming, or they were gonna get stuck with the big bill if they unfortunately had a fire. So, this is really great preventative action for them. So, with that, I'm happy to make a motion.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Well, let me close, let me close the public hearing on the fire protection annexation into Eagle. And now, I will be happy to take up the motion.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the order of annexation of Diane R. Lau and Richard J. Crica into the Eagle Fire Protection District as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. All right. We will now move on to our licenses. And I'm happy to take up a motion. They are all pretty straightforward.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to ratify and approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, and I advise the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Clerk's office, and Phil, I see you joined us. Clerk McGrain?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see you guys.
Good to see you. How you doing?
I'm doing good. I don't have anything on the elections front to report, but I'm doing great. I am very happy to report to the board. I think you've probably seen some of the messaging over the past two days, but Ada Central went live on Sunday afternoon, which is a huge success. It literally was a 24-hour operation, and some of our folks in payroll and HR are working odd hours in the evening, as well as our IT team, doing, many of the programmers, trying to pull everything together. So, the payroll time management piece went live. There's a little delay on the HR piece, but it's scheduled to go on January 1st. So, everything is coming together. It really is a big success. This is that over $2 million project that you guys have helped fund. It's been way more daunting than any of us realized that we were getting into, but so far, everything seems to be going really well. We'll have our first paychecks issued from it January 15th, as I mentioned, to the elected officials meeting. But I think it's a huge success, and I just want to thank, you know, our payroll team, the HR team, especially Amy Herrig, Amber Vanderchance, and, you know, Trent has kind of been rallying the troops throughout all this to pull everything together. And I can't imagine not having Trent kind of overseeing this, because there's been, with COVID and everything, there's been many reasons to try and delay, but it has been a huge success to get this underway. And it'll be a big upgrade for the county from HR to payroll to everything else. So, it's a huge system update for us.
Very good. Hey, Phil, does that interface with the current Commissioners' dashboard? Will we be approving our PAFs the same way we always have been, or will there be another method that we need to do that, that the Commissioners need to do that?
That will change. I think, Cassie, I think the HR piece will have to be implemented first, so that's the piece that was slightly delayed. I don't know how or if it'll integrate with the dashboard, but for sure, the PAF system is being replaced with the new Ada Central system.
Okay.
So, there are some business practices. Everybody's kind of making the adjustment right now to work those through, and that will include you guys as well.
Okay. We'll make sure we're notified. I don't, I know how critical and important paychecks are to everyone. I don't want to be any part of the delay chain, if there is any. So, all right.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The other thing, yeah, Mr. Chairman, the other thing I just want to note, you may have seen in the news just recently, it looks like Congress has struck a deal in terms of stimulus money, right, and money just to keep funding the government, for that matter. I think one of the things I just want to note, though, because I've been trying to follow it fairly closely, but it looks like a deal breaker, and it was funding for local governments or an extension. So, we are not, we've had this conversation with our CARES Act funding. It's good that we were on top of it to get our submissions, to get that money. So, Kathleen has really been overseeing all that, making sure that we seek our reimbursements, and also that we sought our public safety reimbursement, too, so we can get that CARES money in, and we'll just have to stretch that out as far as we can. But it looks like that is our allotment. What we got originally is what we're gonna see for local government. The rest of the relief is focused on the general public and trying to get stimulus money out that way. So, I just, one of the big things to note that impacts us out of the new deal.
Very good. I heard on driving in this morning on one of the news stations, there's actually something for agriculture. It's like $20 per acre or something, but it's very wide where, you know, what this is covering. But I think the big key is, I think, extra money for anyone on unemployment that's gonna carry on a little, so hopefully that will help folks a little bit.
Yeah.
Anything else to report from the clerk's office?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from either of... Any questions from either of my fellow commissioners for the clerk's office?
Just to thank you.
Just to congratulate.
Yeah, thank you, congrats.
Yeah, go say, okay.
Yeah, congrats on finishing out what seems like the longest election season ever.
Agreed. Thank you.
Keep that coin handy though, Phil. You never know when you're going to be called to flip. All right, well, thank you, Phil, for the report from the clerk's office. With that, we will move on to the claims journal, and unless there is any discussion, I would be happy to take up a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated December 18th, 2020.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Speaking of personnel action forms, that is our next item. And unless there's any discussion, we have two leaves with pay and four miscellaneous, I would be happy to take up a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel action forms as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Assessor's office, do I not, I don't think I see Bob up there, do I? No? Do we have a representative from our assessor's office? Then I will give an update because I know that we had, they had to close the Franklin DMV location because of just low staffing. So that location was closed. I haven't seen anything this morning yet indicating that whether it was reopened or not. I did talk with Bob McQuade about, did they consider placing those two people at other locations? And after thinking about it, and he actually called me back later, I'm like, that's a bad idea. If they potentially have been COVID exposed, we don't want to put them in a different location. So they did not repurpose those two clerks that were at the time healthy. So hopefully those come back and we get that going again. But, and I know they're still dealing with software issues with the ITD software update and all that, and refining that process as well. So much like our software upgrades we've had here, there's always a few glitches and things to iron out. So, all right, and then we have our, I hate the term, but tax cancellations or adjustments to take up. And again, these are, in often cases, as Bob would tell us, these are often homeowners exemptions that were not assigned, that should have been assigned, or things like that, or other adjustments due to some other issue with the property. So unless there is comment from my fellow commissioners, I will take up a motion on the tax cancellations.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. We'll move to our treasurer's office. Beth Mon, how are you this morning?
I'm very good, Mr. Chair, thank you. Good morning, morning, fellow commissioners. Big day yesterday for the treasurer's office and really for all of the taxing districts that we collect for. Yesterday was the due date for the 2020 property tax collections. And I am proud to say that it went really smoothly. So grateful for our staff who's been working just incredible hours, late nights, weekends, but offering taxpayers the ability to meet in person. So we have had two locations open just until yesterday. So today we have closed the Cloverdale facility, but that has been available. And also fantastic utilization of our two drop boxes by taxpayers. So really grateful for that. So because yesterday was the due date, that means that late payments will now be assessed at 2% late charge, and that's required by statute. So we still have some payments that are trickling in. Even though yesterday was the due date, any payment that was mailed yesterday is still timely. So we are very busy today still processing bins and bins of mail. So we will get that done, but overall, happy to report that 2020 tax collections, with all of the challenges that presented, has gone incredibly well.
Well, very good. And then, I think, I asked you this before, but that 2% is on the total? It's not on, it doesn't keep going on an unpaid balance? So if somebody's having trouble and trying to get payments in, it's just the standard 2% flat, correct?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. It's a one-time late charge.
Right. And then, Beth, I know it's early in the deadline. Do you have any idea of the percentage of people that have made it in, in a timely manner?
Yes, Mr. Chair, again, these are rough estimates, but so far, it looks like of the 2020 taxes, we have collected 340 million. And for the first half collections, that's approximately 88%. And everything that's paid, we're still processing payments that are timely. So I do expect that to jump into the 90s.
All right, well, that's good news. Given, given all the financial issues going on related to the pandemic and every other thing, that's really quite outstanding, so. Well, any other questions from my fellow commissioners for Beth?
Just thank you again to Beth and her entire team. This is challenging times as well for them. So just appreciate all their diligence and hard work.
Very good. All right.
I'll second that.
Beth, thank you. You still have a smile on, even with all the that's going on. That's, it's always good to see. So thank you for that report.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on, and I would take up a motion on approval of minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. All right, and then now we have a unique one. This is to, as I understand it, for fuel that we need, that weed and pest needs to buy, and a item there. So I don't know if we have anyone, I don't think we have anyone specifically to speak to this, but this is pretty straightforward. This is for, again, processes for weed, pest and mosquito that they need. And this comes up, I think, once a year. So unless there is any other questions or discussion from my commissioners, I would take up a motion.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chair, hold on just a second. There we are. I move to authorize the chair to sign the certificates of state use for purchase of fuel from CoEnergie, United Oil and Lynch Oil LLC for weed and pest.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, we have our agreements. We have 22 agreements. And I know 11 of these got my attention because there's a lot of them for outside counsel, conflict resolution. I didn't know what that was about, so called Anthony Gettis, Tony, and he was very kind to explain that this is when the county is dealing with multiple inner, everybody suing each other, the county can't represent everybody, they've got to send this to outside counsel. My question was, why were there so many different ones? And he said, because all these individuals that are there specialize in different aspects. So that's the reason for the 11, the last 11 on here. And I have all my questions answered regarding that, and it just, again, another fact that I'm constantly learning something, seems like every day or every week here, something new to make a phone call about and get clarification. So unless there are any other discussions from any of my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Kenyon, did you have any, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd just like for the record to note that there is a misspelling on agreement number 14107. It needed to read Gem County with an M and not Jen County.
And, and thank you for pointing that out because I caught that as well. The resolution, the agreement itself is accurate in the way it is spelled. I looked at that this morning, and this is simply on the agenda that it was, yeah, it said Jen, and it has been corrected on the, on there. So it is correct on the agreement itself, though. So if there are no other questions or comments, we will take up a motion on our agreements.
Sure thing, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Procurement. All right, we're getting down to the wire here. Bob, how are you this morning?
Bob's not here, but I'm here.
I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, who is, oh, yes.
Oh, it's Alyssa, sorry.
Alyssa, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. All right, so we've got, oops, I lost my agenda there. So we have got some, three items here under procurement. And we need to open up some RFPs, it looks like, and RFQs.
Yep.
We will take up the first one, RFP 21003 regarding proposed electronic monitoring for Ada County Sheriff's Office.
All right, yes, Chairman, members of the board, Ada County Procurement received five proposals for RFP 21003. If you're ready to proceed with the opening, Jacob will unseal them.
Absolutely, please do. I know while you're doing this, Diane is just, Commissioner Lacchiando is just missing that envelope opener.
Well, Patrick, is this your favorite, electric monitoring?
Yes, this is, yeah, 21003 for the electric monitoring of the sheriff's office.
All right, so Chairman, we will read from the bonfire opening page just the name of the proposers.
Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and start. The first one is Cam Systems. Second one is Idaho Monitoring Services. Third is Scram of Idaho. Fourth is Sentinel Offender Services LLC, and then the fifth one is VigilNet.
All right, and I'm going to assume that you're going to want to table this.
Yes, Chairman, the evaluation team will need time to evaluate the proposals, and we request that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation on the January 26th, 2021 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. And we can take up a motion on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to table the final rankings and award recommendations for RFP 21003 to January 26th, 2021.
Second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, we will move on to opening of RFQ 21010, Design and Construction Service for Ada County Public Defender Expansion in TI 2021.
Yes, Chairman, members of the board, Ada County Procurement received five qualifications submittals for RFQ 21010, and if you're ready to proceed with the opening, Jacob will unseal those qualifications submittals.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm just so happy we've started referring to this as the deli space.
I actually had, I had a lot of problems with, I thought the county was going to start running a deli.
This is the last open space in the courthouse corridor.
Okay.
It's disappearing.
When I first came on, I swear, I was looking, I was looking for a sandwich shop downstairs for about two weeks when I first got here. Oh, see, that's, yeah.
All right. Chairman, we will read into the record the name of the proposers if you're ready for that.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, so the first one is Coal Architects. The second one is CSHQA. Third is Hummel Architects. The fourth is Lombard Conrad Architects PC, and the fifth one is Tate and Associates, Inc.
All right, and again, I know you're going to want some time to evaluate these, and when would you like this table to?
Yes, please, Chairman, the evaluation team will need time to evaluate the submittals, and we'd like to request that this be tabled for final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations to the January 5th, 2021 Open Business Meeting.
Did you say January 5th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. 2021, all right. And I would take up a motion on this RFQ.
Sure thing. Mr. Chair, I move to table the final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations for RFQ 21010 to January 5th, 2021.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. So we'll get one more. We get, that's probably my last peek at that one. All right, so then we will take up opening RFQ 21011, Design Service Public Hearing, Public Safety Building, Front Entry Glass, is that glass system? It is. Glass system and stair replacement. This is out at Ada County Sheriff's Office, the front steps area and the salad, and the double dutch doors out there.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. We'll be replacing that whole new front entry with new staircase, new ADA ramp and glass system, which is called a storefront in the trades. All the new glass and.
Very good. I'm assuming those glass, the glass there then will then be automatic perhaps, or sensor?
We have to look into that, and that would be definitely a budget consideration.
Okay, but something, at least one ADA opening door
Correct.
for people to go with a button or something.
Auto, auto.
Okay, perfect, all right. Okay, well, we can open these up now.
All right, Chairman, members of the board, Ada County Procurement received two qualifications submittals for RFQ 21011. If you're ready to proceed with the opening, Jacob will unseal these qualifications submittals.
Absolutely.
All right, and Chairman, I'll just read into the record the name of the proposers.
Please do.
The first one is CSHQA, and the second one is Lombard Conrad Architects PC.
All right. And again, you're going to want time to negotiate here and evaluate these. When would you like this table to?
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman, the evaluation team will need time to evaluate the submittals, and we would like to request that this be tabled for final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations on the January 12th, 2021 Open Business Meeting.
All right, January 12th, 2020. Okay, with that, I will take up a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to table the final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations for RFQ 21011 to January 12th, 2021.
Second that.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. All right, unless there is any other general discussion from, or announcements from either of my fellow commissioners, we will go into recess and stay on, Commissioner Kenyon. I think we'll just keep this open for EMS, and we'll be right back on. Everyone else, thank you very much. Axe, thanks for being here. And you guys all have a very Merry Christmas.
You too.
Me too.
Thank you.
You are off the record. You are on the record.
All right, good morning. It is Tuesday, December 22nd, 2020, Port of Ada County Commissioners convened as our Emergency Management Services Board, and we have all three commissioners with us. Commissioner Kenyon is on the phone with us, and Commissioner LaCianto is on WebEx. Sean Raines is not available this morning, he usually joins us, but we have an update from him that was presented to Commissioner LaCianto, so, Madam Clerk, any changes to this agenda?
No, there are not.
All right, with that, I will take up a motion for the claims journal.
I'm already off me, great. I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the claims journal dated December 18th, 2020, regarding EMS expenditures.
I will second. I haven't heard from Commissioner Kenyon. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, and Commissioner Kenyon is either dropped off or abstaining, but we'll, well, I have a feeling we've lost Commissioner Kenyon. Yes, hearing nothing will assume that she is not with us, and I'm going to let. Okay, but I'll, yeah, and again, but just, just for the record, I think we've lost her, so she'll be absent for that vote. Okay, with that, I will take up a motion on approval of minutes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. And agreements, I would, if we, let's see, this is regarding our vaccine distribution and, and setting up vaccine stations, so I don't know that we have any other.
Yeah, just for the record, Mr. Chair, so the EMS, they are allowed to administer the vaccine under the supervision of our two medical directors, so that's what this agreement is, and it's just super exciting, they're getting the Moderna vaccine shipment in, I think, today, and are setting themselves up to start administering it, so.
Good, and, and I'm glad it's the.
Very exciting.
I'm glad it's the Moderna, because that is much less volatile to any issues in transport, much more stable vaccine, so easier to manage and, and distribute. So with that, I would take a motion on the agreement.
Great. I move to approve and ratify that one agreement as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, ayes have it, motion carries.
There she is.
Is Commissioner Kenyon back with us?
I'm back on now.
Okay, you made it, you made it just in time for the motion on the agreement for the vaccinations, so critical, critical, critical thing for this year, for sure.
The most important, yes.
Yeah, possibly, yes, possibly the most significant thing that's occurred all year.
Yeah.
All right. Well, any other general discussion? Commissioner LaCianto, you want to give us Sean Raines' brief update on what, what's going on?
Yeah, no, he just texted me, they had a big access meeting, that's all the providers to discuss how they're going to roll out vaccination planning for EMS staff. I know Mark Babson has taken the lead on that, he's our person who, from Community Paramedics, who generally does the future vaccine clinics, so some extra work for him, but I know they're all excited about it. I did find out that Central Street Health was able to coordinate to get jail staff, jailed medical staff vaccinated over the weekend, so that was fantastic. And you guys missed it on Thursday, I got a really awesome note from my husband that he was scheduled, so he got his this weekend.
Oh, wow, okay.
Christmas present ever, so. I was running down the halls, super excited.
One, one less susceptible person in the household, right? Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Hopefully, yeah, we hope, we hope it's all, it all works out, it's all good, it all does what it's, you know, supposed to and intended to do, so, well, good.
Well, it definitely feels like, you know, the tide is, tide is turning now that we're getting these, these vaccines out there, so.
I'm going to be nothing but optimistic and hopeful that they, it does exactly what it's supposed to do, so, and I'm glad, I'm glad our first responders and those, those critical staff are the ones receiving this first. It makes the most sense, because if they go down, it doesn't matter if other people are, or if other portions of the population are okay. If we can't take care of those people that are coming down with this, it's, the whole thing collapses, so I'm, I'm very happy to see this rolling out. Well, is there any other discussion or comments regarding EMS matters? Annie, I'm going to check with Annie real quick. Annie, for Commissioner Kenyon, will we stay on this for legal, or will you start a separate WebEx, and we'll call her back again?
It's going to be a separate WebEx, because she can stay on the phone.
Okay.
Stay on the phone, because that's not linked to the.
Okay, so Commissioner Kenyon, you're, you're not linked through the WebEx, so you can stay on the phone. Commissioner LaCianto, we will recess from our EMS WebEx, and we'll come back on in legal here in just a moment.